Invite everyone to stand for a moment of silence, our personal prayer, and then remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, may be seated. Good afternoon and welcome to our meeting for July the 13th, 2021. Regular meetings are held on the second and fourth Tuesday at 3:00 PM. Public hearings are held at 7:00 PM on the fourth Tuesday of each month. Deviations from the schedule will be announced. The meetings are broadcast live on RV TV Channel 3 and will be rebroadcast on Thursday, 7:00 PM until Saturday at 4:00 PM. Board of Supervisors meetings are view, can be viewed online through Rona County's website at www.ronacountyva.gov. Our meetings are closed captioned, so it's important for everyone to speak directly into the microphones at the podium. Individuals who require assistance or special arrangements to participate in or attend a Board of Supervisors meeting should contact the clerk to the board at 540-772-2005, at least 48 hours in advance. I would ask that you place all cell phones, turn them off, or place on silence. Item A of our agenda is our opening ceremonies and our roll call. Madam Clerk, if you call the roll.
Mr. Mahoney. Mrs. Hooker.
Here.
Mr. North.
Here.
Mr. Radford.
Here.
Mr. Peters.
Here.
Item B is a request to postpone, add to, or change the order of agenda items. I do have one request of the Board, and that is to add an additional closed session pursuant to the Code of Virginia 2.2-371183, and that is to discuss or consider the disposition of publicly-held real property that is presently used for park purposes where discussion in open, open meetings would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body. Are there any objections?
No, sir.
Okay. Are there any other requests? Mr. O'Donnell.
No further changes, sir.
Mr. Lubeck.
No changes, sir.
All right, thank you. Item C, proclamations, resolutions, recognitions, and awards. Today, item C, one is a resolution honoring the Home Place Restaurant after 38 years of service to Rona County. I would like to welcome Marshall Stanley from our Economic Development Department. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. Pleased to be here before you today for a resolution of appreciation for the Home Place Restaurant and its many contributions to our community. Kevin Wingate, owner of the Home Place Restaurant in Catawba, is here to accept the resolution of appreciation presented to him and the Home Place team after nearly four decades of operation in Rona County. The Home Place Restaurant has been a family-owned business located in Catawba District of Rona County since 1982, when it was founded by Kevin's father, Harold Wingate. Kevin and his team recently made the difficult decision to permanently close the Home Place's doors following the effects of COVID-19 and what it had on its establishment and other factors. The Home Place Restaurant helped paint a picture of southwest Virginia and provided a culinary experience that tastefully expressed Rona's culture. For 38 years, the Home Place Restaurant was the standard for local southern cuisine with beautiful scenery of the Catawba Valley that perfectly complemented the delicious meals being served. The Home Place Restaurant was a community favorite in our restaurant community, but also a small business with generational longevity and an attraction that made visitors feel like they were home when they came to Rona County. We are grateful to the Wingate family for many years of service to our community, and we have Mr. Wingate here to accept the resolution.
Okay, I'll just say something real quick. When my dad opened the restaurant 38 years ago in 1982, we had no idea, or he didn't either, that it would be so busy and be so well-accepted, and we appreciate the 38 years and all the business that we had, and we appreciate the county and the Board for, for recognizing us today.
The resolution we want to present to you. Madam Clerk, if you would read the resolution.
Resolution honoring the Home Place Restaurant after 38 years of service to Rona County. Whereas the county of Rona is proud to have been the home to the Home Place Restaurant since 1982 and has served the community with delicious family-style southern cuisine for nearly four decades. And whereas this restaurant has been a staple of Rona County's restaurant community and represented a signature expression of southwest Virginia's culinary culture. And whereas the Home Place Restaurant also served as an important destination that gave Rona County character and provided scenery and cuisine that was beloved by Rona County residents and visitors alike. And whereas the Board wishes to acknowledge the dedication from the Wingate family to operate one of Rona County's iconic local restaurants for 38 years, and now therefore we, the Board of Supervisors of Rona County, Virginia, does hereby present the Home Place Restaurant with a resolution of appreciation. And further, the Board extends its deep appreciation to the Wingate family and the employees of the Home Place Restaurant for their many contributions to our community, the local economy, and our citizens.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you. I'm going to take a motion, we'll do a motion and comments. So, motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Second. Couple of seconds, have there? Madam Clerk, if you call the roll.
Mrs. Hooker, yes. Mr. North?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes. And I'll begin by saying, I'm, I'm going to miss the Home Place. We, we, we went there quite often, so really, it's a sad day in Rona County. But, and I'll also say, if Mr. North and I go to church together, our, the, the youth group, that's where they always did their senior, had their senior get-together at the, at the end, end of the year for Bon Sac Baptist, and, and, you know, it was just a, something that everybody in our community loved, but I appreciate what you and your family have done for our community and people all over the region. I mean, all over, and I have people coming to the bank from all over the place. Where's that restaurant? They will know where it is, so I appreciate everything you've, you've done and your family have done for Rona County, and we're going to miss it.
We're glad to have done it, and I appreciate it.
Yeah.
Ms., Ms. Hooker?
So Kevin, I just want to say thank you again for everything the Wingate family has done for, for our valley. It isn't just for Rona County, but this has just really been an iconic place for this whole region, and it really speaks highly of the, the culture of this area. And, you know, so many times, like you were saying, Jason, that there are moments in our lives and our history when we go back, and there were important events that took place there at the Home Place. I really grew to love your dad, and I, I know in some of our conversations, I think we solved all the world problems together, and, and he is so greatly missed, and I know you miss him too, but thank you. Thank you for all that you've done for this valley. Thank you.
Mr. North?
The only thing I can say is, not only are we going to miss you, but I'm looking forward to all those recipes you've had, because maybe I can dispense my sons and their families and to carry on the tradition at least in some way at their home, but that food was, was priceless.
Well, thank you, we appreciate it.
And you, just, you being here today has got my stomach turning thinking about all that fried chicken and the ham and the roast beef. And the ham, I used to love to take the ham home with a couple biscuits and have it the next morning at breakfast.
Yeah.
That would really get your taste buds going, because that was some kind of good ham.
Yeah, it was good.
And so, we appreciate everything you did for the community, but we sure got a big void to fill, and I don't know if it's ever going to be the same as the Home Place.
Thank you, we appreciate it.
Mr. Radford?
Kevin, your dad hit a home run. He hit, he hit a home run, and you carried it on. You kept it going, and my dad is, is good, misses your dad. You know, they, they did a little bit of stuff together in, in the real estate world, knew each other, and, but it, just like the other, other three have said, I mean, there's just so many memories there that we're all going to cherish. It's, it's a time capsule of, of what happened in those 36, 36 years, and definitely it'll be missed, but I think the reason why it did so well is because the name, Home Place, that strikes in, in everybody's stomach and their heart, they go together, but thank you so much, and, you know, we are going to miss you.
Well, we're glad to have, to have done it. Thank you.
You neither. We're going to do a quick picture.
Okay.
Okay, item D is new business. Item D1 is a resolution adopting legislative priorities for the August 2021 Special Session of the Virginia General Assembly and petitioning the General Assembly to favorably consider the topics and issues addressed herein. Mr. Lubeck, our county attorney, along with Eldon James and Sue Rowland of Eldon James and Associates, welcome.
Thank you, and good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the Board. Each year, the Rona County Board of Supervisors adopts a formal resolution of priorities for the upcoming General Assembly session, and this year is unique in that the Board has already adopted a resolution setting forth priorities for the General Assembly's general session that they held, of course, earlier this year. And this has also been a unique year in that there has already been one special session, there has been a second special section announced that will begin on August the 2nd, and the focus is expected to be on budget issues, and we understand that there is a potential third special session that may be held in the fall to address issues that might include redistricting. And at the Board's direction, I have prepared a resolution that sets forth four priorities for the General Assembly's consideration during this August Special Session. The resolution included in the Board's packet only included three of these priorities. The fourth was added over the weekend in response to Friday's sudden emergency closure of five state hospitals to new admissions, and copies of this updated resolution have been shared with members of the Board at the days. We expect that we will, again, during the fall, prepare a legislative agenda for the, the general 2022 general session. But before reviewing these four priorities for the August Special Session, it would be my pleasure to introduce Eldon James and Sue Rowland, who are our legislative liaisons. I'd love to, to give a brief introduction for each of them. Mr. James has served as a legislative liaison to Rona County since 2005. He has spent over 40 years working in and with Virginia state and local governments. Mr. James received his Bachelor's of Science degree in Recreation Resource Management and his Master's in Urban and Regional Planning from Virginia Commonwealth University. He spent 17 years working in state and local government positions with the Commission of Outdoor Recreation, the Cooperative Extension Service, and King George County. For five years, he served as the county administrator for King George County, and when Eldon left King George County to government, he opened Eldon James and Associates, Inc. in 1994 and has served as the principal of the firm since then. The firm's current clients include over a dozen Virginia localities, of which we are very fortunate to be a member, the Rappahannock River Basin Commission, the Virginia Chapter of American Planning Association, the Virginia Recreation and Park Society, the Virginia Association of Area Agencies on Aging, and the Virginia Goodwill Industries Network. Sue Rowland, who is also with us today, is also a private consultant in governmental affairs. She formed SR Consulting, Inc. in April 2002, and Sue has several areas of expertise, but in working with the county, her expertise in the area of human services is of particular benefit. She previously led the Northern Virginia Regional Commission's Human Services Department. She served as a special assistant to the state's health commissioner and was an executive director to, to a nonprofit healthcare services agency. At this time, I will briefly highlight the four legislative priorities that have been set forth in the Board's resolution, and following that, I will turn the time over to Eldon and Sue. The first priority that the Board has requested that be included in their agenda is with regards to school capital needs, and I'll briefly read over each of these four priorities. And again, under school capital needs, the Board supports making additional state resources and funding tools available to localities to support school capital needs, including rehabilitation and upgrades to existing facilities, as well as construction of new facilities. The second priority is broadband. The COVID-19 pandemic has surely underscored the importance of access to reliable, affordable broadband and enabling telework, distance learning, and telemedicine. Broadband access is essential for all Virginians, and the Board urges the General Assembly to use available funds to improve access to and the affordability of broadband with the goal of achieving statewide coverage. The third priority is the replenishment of the Unemployment Trust Fund. The Commonwealth's Unemployment Trust Fund has been depleted by the economic hardship caused by the COVID-19 pandemic. Significant increases in employer taxes are projected to be required to replenish the trust fund in absence of other resources. And as an employer, the Rona County and the Board urges the General Assembly not to increase employer taxes in order to replenish the trust fund, which would divert local funds away from investments in other community needs. The additional tax burden on local businesses may also hamper progress toward a full economic recovery. The Board requests that the General Assembly support the use of federal aid to stabilize the trust fund. And as I mentioned earlier, the fourth priority today is public hospital funding needs. In light of recent, the recent closure of five Virginia state mental health hospitals to new admissions, including Catawba Hospital, which is located in Rona County, the state hospital system is in crisis. The emergency mental health needs of our citizens cannot be met. The Board urges the General Assembly to use available funds, including funds from the Federal American Rescue Plan, to address the needs of this hospital system. And in addition to the resolution which has been prepared, staff, particularly Alex Jones with our Department of Community Development, has assisted in preparing a pass-along card which sets forth these four priorities. We, of course, are very grateful to Alex and appreciate his, his unique talents in putting this attractive card together. We anticipate sharing this with legislators as we begin to meet with them, and also intend on sharing both the resolution and the pass-along cards with leaders of the General Assembly's budget committees. And again, at this time, I will turn the time over to Eldon and Sue. They are expected to share information regarding the ARPA funds in general and how the Board's priorities complement the express priorities of the Governor and the General Assembly.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. Wow. You know, it's been almost two years since we last stood in front of you in person. We were just sitting here going, really? It was fall of 2019? Okay, well, it's good to be back, very good to be back. Let's set the stage just a little bit for August 2nd. As, as Peter told you, the primary purpose is for appropriating the Federal American Rescue Plan Act, or ARPA, and I'll just say ARPA going forward, otherwise I'll just fumble through that longer name. There also, on their agenda, is appointment of judges. And I've, I've been told there will also be some discussion of VMI. So we're going to hope that they will get things done very quickly. We'll not have an extended session. Relative to ARPA funds, approximately 4.3 billion will be considered for appropriation by the Assembly. Virginia's share of the 350 billion economic recovery funding for state, local, territorial, and tribal governments is, is a big part of, of what is driving this. That 4.3 billion comes out of that $350 billion nationwide fund. 2.3 billion also came from that, but that was allocated directly to Virginia's 133 counties and cities. You've already seen your June 21 allotment of that. You'll see another in June of '22, split in two payments. Under his authority, the Governor has authorized the distribution earlier this week of just shy of 305 million to the 190 towns across Virginia. And again, that's the first, that's the down payment. The second payment for the towns will come in June of '22. Some of the 4.3 billion that the Assembly is going to be figuring out how to divvy up is already earmarked, and I'm using the term earmarked loosely. I'm not sure exactly what the term is. We've, we've dealt with a lot of new terminology, starting with, what? Unallocation back last fall when the state budget had money unallocated. The, the earmarks are a cross on a ray of, of funding sources, and it's difficult to pin down exactly those dollar amounts within Virginia's 4.3 billion. I'll give you an example, and I can give you the number on that one, because I was in a meeting yesterday where the Commissioner of the Department of Aging and Rehab Services actually told the group that number. And that number is 33.9 million, and that's the amount out of the 4.3 billion that is coming through the state to the 25 area agencies on aging for vulnerable, services to vulnerable seniors, like LOA, home-delivered meals, in-home care, transportation services. And items like that are spread across the budget. The Assembly will really just confirm, okay, here is the amount, and here's the agency going to, because that's where it was earmarked in the federal allocation. An awful lot of the money is not specifically allocated, but is limited by some broad parameters. As with the announcement you heard about the towns yesterday, there was an announcement from the Governor that he is recommending to the Assembly 353 million to help with business recovery, 250 to rebuild Virginia, 50 million to the Virginia Tourism Corporation, and 53 between the, million between the industrial revitalization fund and the Main Street program. Let's talk about your priorities and, and what we see happening going forward. And I'm going to hand it off to Sue at this point.
And to start with, right at the top of your resolution, you speak to school capital needs, and I'm going to remind you to recall Eldon's number of 4.5?
4.3.
4.3, I keep trying to add some to it. Billion dollars is, is the amount that they're going to be looking at for a reallocation. Now, the Assembly had, had directed, in the past, when the federal money came down to the state, that it wanted to have a primary role in the decision of how these funds would be allocated. And that's what we're going to be seeing going on in August, as Eldon said. Now, the Department of Education, all of the departments have made a submission to the Governor of what it is that they would like to see in his recommendations to the Assembly of how these funds would be used. And as you can imagine, with any other time that such a request has gone forward, their requests far exceed the amount that we know is available. So, that's, that's your first foundation block to step on. Now, we're going to look at what we already know about requests from localities for capital improvements within school divisions across the state, where half of our school buildings are over 50 years old, 70% are over at or near capacity, and 26% of our buildings do not meet, they are not ADA compliant. So, okay, let's, and we, we're not even going to talk about how our school buildings deal with our new technologies. Add all of those things up, and we get to 9.8 billion dollars. So that request all by itself far exceeds the amount that's available through ARPA. What the department has done is asked that the Governor consider allocating $2 billion for the purpose of school renovation projects. And without distinguishing how these funds should be used, because a number of divisions across the state have responded to COVID in making upgrades to their HVAC systems and so forth already, they are recommending that these funds would be available in the first year without any kind of designation for how the funds should be spread out over the course of the years in which spending is available. They are recommending that projects would prioritize two divisions who have the least ability to pay or whose projects would most highly or would impact the greatest number of at-risk students within their school system. So, as you can see, the Assembly is going to have a major hurdle in front of it.
Broadband funding. Did you have a question?
I'd have a question. Do you want to save the questions to the end?
No, go right ahead.
On the school capital, it's interesting to hear about the $2 billion for school facilities. However, there's a committee that was formed on school modernization and construction, which is supposed to have a paper come out in November or December with recommendations for the Governor's budget. Then, of course, whoever the Governor is is going to have to mull that over, and that's where I see the new school construction coming from. What's your sense on if there is a line item in the budget recommended to the budget committees? How is the state of Virginia going to pay for that? Do you have any opinions or you heard anything on that? Because, you know, you can, you can recommend it, but you got to pay for it, so.
Sure, sure.
Where do you see the revenue stream coming from?
Well, Mr. Chairman, I'll give you my, my pat answer to that question. Every time it's ever asked is, that's what the Assembly members have to decide. That's their job, where it's going to come from. We, we are definitely in an unusual position. I mean, here we have money because of COVID, that wicked bug, that is going to be available relatively quickly, and now Virginia is also benefiting from some smart decisions that we've made over the years, and we have revenues coming in that is not true, you know, across the country. So, they, they have a lot on their plate, thankfully. It's not deciding, you know, which tiny number they may be able to say yes to, but they're still going to have to say no to some.
I hear one of the gubernatorial candidates alluding to funding for instruction and facilities, and so whatever that term "facilities" means going forward is something we got to pay attention to in the press and as the months and days ahead roll out. But, you know, a lot of the problems with the schools are of its, of the historical perspective, because funding stopped in the '30s when it was shifted to transportation, and the counties had to make do with school construction, and then in the '50s, there were some grants, and that's the last revenue stream for capital, that is, new schools, that has probably been seen. So, it's no telling that these schools are in the shape they're in all over the state of Virginia, including the metropolitan as well as southwestern Virginia areas. But cost creep is going to be a challenge to, to this.
It will be, and, Mr. Chairman, just one last comment. There's no question that this is exactly the kind of arena in which the squeaky wheel does get threes.
Absolutely.
And you all, you all are very wise to be at the top of the list.
As a matter of fact, there's a caravan going around the state right now with Vanco reps, from what I understand, touring some of the schools in need of the most repairs, so I'm sure that that's going to play well in advocating for those systems. Thank you.
And that's a follow along to a tour that was done by several members of the Assembly led by Senator Stanley.
Exactly.
A couple of years ago. And he leads a contingent that has been pushing for capital money. Now, we did have, if you go back about a decade ago, we had about two bi- maybe even three bienniums where there was a slug and then that slug got smaller until it went away. But even in its biggest year, it was only a little more than enough to build one high school. So.
Comment, please.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, so the, when I, we've read this for quite a while now and the requirements for the American Rescue, American Recovery Plan. And it looks like when I read in there, rural and at-risk students, which you talked about, Sue. To me, it's like Roanoke County is going to be left out.
Well, you know, I would say to that, that I think this thing is written in such a way, in my view, that it doesn't say this is only where those funds are going to go. It does say there's priority there. But Roanoke County certainly can make the case for its own at-risk students and how it may choose to put its proposal forward. So, you know, as you all have conversations with your school board members, you know, about that, that's when your partnership will be important.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to add a comment to that, Mr. Radford. The School Modernization Committee, if I heard correctly in its second meeting, got all the information from the school districts all over the state. And they all looked at it and it was a lot of data. And I can remember the chair making the comment that we're certainly not going to be able to address all of these. So she was going to go back and request that Superintendent of Instruction, I think Superintendent Lane is his name, go back to the locales and ask them for their priorities. So that's kind of where the ball is. And I'm sure Roanoke County is working on their priorities, at least I hope they are.
I think that's an accurate description of right where they stand at this point. Let's move on to your second broadband. And it's amazing how things change. Think eight, nine years ago, you couldn't get anybody to talk about state funding support for broadband and look where we are today. To the point where the VATI funds, a major chunk was announced within the last week or so for a major project up on the northern neck in the middle peninsula that is a partnership between the Electric Cooperative Dominion and an internet service provider specializes in rural areas. And their goal is in Phase One to serve between 7,000 and 8,000 unserved. And it specifies all the way through, they're unserved, not underserved, which we all know may be a hole in the VATI program. But these funds, clear priority within the federal statements. Broadband is mentioned equally with water and sewer, which is, again, you go back seven, eight years ago and that word, you never would have seen that word in the same sentence. Clearly, it's a federal priority. The General Assembly members, all that we've talked to, all mention it as their priorities. The governor's office has said, and matter of fact, their quote is, "to accelerate the 10-year plan to ensure universal broadband access within the next 18 months using these funds." And although we haven't seen an announcement of a formal recommendation from the governor yet, I would expect between now and August 2nd we will, because that policy statement was made in June and was made jointly with the Democratic leadership of both the House of Delegates and the State Senate. So we clearly feel that broadband is in the mix for some level of funding. As you know, you could repeat some of the things Sue said. We've got 4.3 billion. When you add up all the lists, it's twice that 4.3. You know, where's it going to end up? I'm going to move next to replenishing the Unemployment Trust Fund. And I'll just say that one this way. And Peter said something similar when he read your resolution. That, the Unemployment Trust Fund took an absolute beating over the last 18 months. I don't know, you know, I'm a small business. I don't know a single business person I've talked to and said, okay, when's the bill going to come due? And I mean, I know you've heard it from your business community. Every legislator has heard it. The governor's office has heard it. And who are those employers? It's not just private for-profit business. It's all your non-proper. Whether that be your church and their two employees, whether that be LOA that I just mentioned a little while ago and their employees. And it's all local and state government. So replenishing as much as they can afford to of the trust fund and taking that tax burden off of everyone is something that will clearly be a priority. And again, I'll say conversations that I've had in the last two months with any member of either the administration or members of the Assembly, it's on their lips, you know, on their minds. Public Costco's.
I have, we have all had conversation about the stresses and strains on our mental health system across the state, both in terms of inpatient and outpatient services for a long number of years. And since the death of Senator Deeds' son, not too far from here, we have heard a strong commitment retained within the Assembly. I have recently heard members of the Assembly from the Deeds Commission at its meetings, some of whom are at the very top of the chain, if you will, make public statements that it's their intention that there be much closer to full funding for mental health services. But then we had Friday come along. Within the same list of requests from agencies to the governor for the use of ARPA funds, it's also very appropriate that some of these funds could be used to help us in some of these areas of crisis. COVID had a significant impact. And on our mental health staff, not only those who are working at your C S V, but those within the Catawba Hospital system as well. And in the documentation that was provided by the department, they acknowledged that salaries for staff in these public facilities is at about 50% of what the market rate for the kinds of care that they provide. And that their turnover rate is in round numbers at about 30%. Can't run a business, you know, with those kinds of numbers. So they have asked for some of the ARPA funds to be used for incentives, bonuses for people to stay, to try to attract people to come in. They have commented about how even using contract staff, they're having trouble holding those folks in-house and have asked for more money for salaries, but just taken it up to the 75% percentile. We definitely have got some issues. And again, I think it's important, we certainly appreciate the opportunity that you've given us by highlighting this particular crisis in your resolutions, I think.
In conclusion, we've kind of mentioned it as we've gone through. If you look at the priorities as stated by the governor all the way back in June, if you look at the statements that you see in the various press releases, your four priorities are mentioned one way or another in every one of those statements. And I can sit here and rewrite down one of the press releases from the governor, and they've got five bullets. And four of them, in one way or another, mentions underfunded state and local public health, fund the Unemployment Trust Fund, modernize public school buildings across Virginia, and then the accelerate broadband deployment. That's the good news. So we'll just have to see how it gets divvied up. We will be watching. We will be, starting tomorrow, be taking your message with some of you, to members of your delegation. It's not dissimilar from the message that VACO has sent in writing to the governor's office. And just keep, we just need to keep adding the voices. There is another special session. Peter said, there's the potential. No, it's not potential. There will be another special session. And it will be, sorry about that, it will be likely in October. And that's the redistricting special session. And in the latest release, I was able to pick up from July 9th, they're now saying they're expecting the U.S. Census data by mid-August. Under the constitutional amendment that was approved a couple of years ago, once that's received, clock starts ticking for the redistricting commission to do their work. They have 45 days to deliver that first plan for the House of Delegates and the State Senate. They have another 15 days after that for the congressional districts. Once the General Assembly receives that first one, by Constitution, they have 15 days to come back together to meet and act. The bill for, the legislative bill, not dollar bill, legislative bill for the House of Delegates and the Senate can only come as one piece of legislation. It cannot be amended. It must be voted up or down. And if it is approved, then it moves forward. No longer goes to the governor, which is the way it used to be. The governor has no role in this process now. It is the bipartisan commission and the General Assembly. If the General Assembly rejects it, it goes back to the commission. The commission has 14 days to present another plan. The General Assembly then has seven days to consider it up or down. And if they can't agree, they vote it down, either they don't vote or they vote it down, it goes to the Virginia Supreme Court. And Constitution does not lay out a timeline for the State Supreme Court. We'll just leave that one. The following along right behind that will be the congressional. And it operates the same way. It's just it will be out of phase with the others. So there'll be another, at least two special sessions, unless the redistricting commission can send both pieces of legislation, congressional as well as state, at the same time. I don't know that that's humanly possible with the amount of work that they've got to do in a very short period of time. They're out doing their public hearings now that are mandated as part of the process.
Questions, Chairman? Eldon, whether they approve the first draft or not, will that, will that come into play in the election November 2nd or will that be implemented next year?
It'll have to be implemented next year. We are way far behind. It would have, would have had to, in a normal year, you, the state would have received its census information probably in February. I mean, that's the previous decades, so that they could be done in time for June primaries. Well, obviously, we missed that. It would come into play in the next cycle for the House of Delegates, for the Senate, and for Congress. The question becomes, will there be the requirement by the Assembly to hold a special election of the House of Delegates? Because, see, the Senate's not up again for two more years. So it doesn't affect them, same way it does the House. And will House members serve a one-year term and have a special election? Or will they serve out the two-year term? To be determined. And I would expect, once there's legislative action, that may not be the final word. I guess just leave it that way, because whichever way they go, somebody's not going to like it. And somebody will.
Thank you.
We've trespassed enough on your time, Mr. Radford.
Yeah, it'll be, Ellen, you mentioned in your opening comments about they're going to be looking at recovery funds for businesses, small businesses. It'll be interesting, you know, how that's going to play out. Because we have sitting on our first row, a restaurant owner that had to close down due to COVID. I know personally, our family lost a couple of leases for our commercial properties. They're gone forever. So how do you recover that? So it'll be interesting to see how that plays out.
Like, the governor's announcement yesterday was the 250 million to rebuild Virginia, which is the program that's in place for providing the grants. What that said to us was they're going to use the existing structure. But that's not necessarily the case. The governor could, in his formal proposal, recommend some changes to maybe fix some weaknesses or reprioritize. We don't know. And then the Assembly, once it gets out of the governor's hands, it gets to the Assembly, it's up to the 140 members of the Assembly to decide, is it rebuild Virginia as it's been operating? Or is it some modified version?
If it'll trickle down to the private sector, is that?
Correct. That chunk of money is for supporting the private sector.
Okay, okay. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a resolution before us outlining our priorities for the August 2021 special session. Is there a motion to accept?
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman.
Motion. Second from Ms. Hooker. Madam Clerk, if you call the roll.
Mrs. Hooker, yes, Mr. Noorth.
Yes.
Mr. Radford.
Yes.
Mr. Peters.
Yes. Item E is the first reading of ordinances. Item E1 is an ordinance amending the Roanoke County Code by amending Chapter 8 dot 1, which is erosion and sediment control. Mr. Tark Manier, Director of Development Services, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, member of the Board. You had before your recommendations to amend the erosion and sediment control ordinance, known as Chapter 8.1 in county code. This is, issue is not new to you. We have discussed that with the current Board and previous Board in multiple work sessions. My role today is try to summarize the amendment that's before you. Hopefully, anybody who's listening can follow up. And if not, we will always available. So as requested by the municipal storm sewer system, which known as MS4 permit, the county is required to make progress towards our lowering discharge to the sediment to meet its total maximum daily load on the water load allocation. Waste load allocation. The county prepared TMDL plans back in 2015. And to comply with the MS4 permit, these plans committed the county to perform certain actions. One of these actions was to consider an ordinance to provide stream buffering. Staff discussed with the Board have proposed revisions to the erosion and sediment control ordinance to provide 25-foot wide stream buffer on each side of perennial streams for new development. These streams buffers would protect a strip of land along perennial streams to maintain flood water storage and to reduce soil erosion and property damage during floods. This item has been under consideration since 2015. The proposed amendment would apply to, only to the new development that required erosion and sediment control permits and in adjacent to perennial streams. Generally, prohibit land disturbance within 25 feet of the ordinance's high water marks. Exceptions allowed for certain activities, like certain utility lines, water-dependent facilities, roads, where no practical alternatives existed, and also for federal-state permitted streams improvements. Lots that were plotted and developed, and development plans submitted for review prior to the effective day of this ordinance, of the dates required, are exempt. Via various means, we, staff has contacted the local home builder association as well as the engineers. And staff made revisions to the ordinance over time. These were discussed with you in various, in various work sessions. The fiscal impact, costs associated with establishing a stream buffer were an important concern raised by everybody that we spoke to. Staff believe that the cost increases for any development will be very limited by excluding intermittent streams and by listing allowable uses in the buffer area. On the other hand, the stream buffer benefits the community as it. On the other hand, the stream buffer benefits the community as it will. Lessens to the erosions to the streams, lessens to the damage to the property from floods, maintain flood storage to avoid increasing downstream flooding, protect water quality, and demonstrates compliance with the MS4 permit requirements to address sediment impairments. There is no fiscal impact associated with this new amendment of the erosion and sediment control on the county itself. So the recommendation, staff recommend approving this ordinance amendment for the first reading and establish a public hearing and second meeting, second reading of the ordinance for July 27, 2021. I have listed or attached to the report some of the comments that came from various organizations with our request of, or the amendment that we did for the ordinance. I'll be glad to address any questions you might have.
Any questions? Mr. Radford?
Yeah, more of a comment. Just, you know, thank, thank you guys, Tark, for engineering, for taking on the stream buffer ordinance. You know, we've talked about it quite a bit, and glad you reached out to the development community, and you took their suggestions, because, you know, they have to deal with it. But we need to protect our streams. I mean, it's sort of common sense. We know all this kind of arrived through the Clean Water Act back in the seventies. So we're just sort of carrying on and just cleaning up what we, we're really be responsible for. So, you know, thank you for a good job, for the work y'all did, and reaching out to the community, getting recommendations, and letting them know.
You're very welcome, sir.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? If not, I have a motion to approve first reading and schedule second reading for July 27.
I'll make that motion.
All right. I'll second. Madam Clerk, if you call the roll.
Mrs. Hooker? Yes. Mr. Norworth?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Thank you.
Item E2 is an ordinance approving a public utility easement to Roanoke Gas at 2121 and 2131 Cardinal Park Drive. This is in the Vinton Business Park. I'd like to welcome Doug Blunt, our Director of General Services and Parks, Recreation, and Tourism. Welcome.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Roanoke Gas has requested a new easement to expand our natural gas service to Montgomery Village subdivision located in the Vinton Magisterial District. To expand service to the subdivision, a new easement must be approved by Roanoke County and the Town of Vinton in the Vinton Business Park. The Town of Vinton has added this item to their July 20th, '21 meeting agenda, though I did receive an update from them yesterday that I'm not sure that they're going to be able to meet that meeting date due to some changes with the deed of easement. And Mr. Lubak will help to explain that here in just a few moments. The easement is twenty-two thousand six hundred and seventy-five feet, excuse me, square feet, or point five-two-zero-six acres, as documented on the plat provided by Lumston and Associates, dated January 4th, 2021. This easement does begin in the cul-de-sac located on Cardinal Park Drive, and is twenty feet and traverses the exterior of the Stormwater Basin on 2121 Cardinal Park Drive for eight-hundred-and-ninety-three feet. The easement then crosses the backside of 2031 Cardinal Park Drive along the Montgomery Village subdivision boundary for six-hundred-and-fifteen feet. This easement does not impact the development of either parcel. The easement has been coordinated with Jill Loop, our Director of Economic Development, as well as David Henderson, our county engineer, as well as with the Town of Vinton. There are no fiscal impacts to granting the utility easement, and staff does recommend approval of the first reading of ordinance and setting a second reading for July 27. At this time, I'd like to invite Mr. Lubak to be able to explain the deed of easement and an update since your board packet was published last week.
And good afternoon again, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. As Mr. Blunt had shared, after preparing and uploading the draft ordinance and deed of easement, I continued to work with council for the Town of Vinton. And over the weekend, we arrived at some conclusions, one of them being that the town cannot convey a permanent easement in public property of which is an owner or a part-owner. It is limited in scope of a forty years of duration. And there are additional requirements imposed on towns that are not imposed upon counties. And this is set forth in Section 15.2, 2100 of the Code of Virginia. So we have, we've discussed several options with council for the Town of Vinton. And what we've concluded is simply for the county to proceed as intended. We've made some minor changes to both the ordinance and the deed of easement, and copies have been provided to the board, that this would not be a permanent easement, but a temporary easement that would last in duration of forty years. We've decided that it would make the most sense for both the town and the county to grant this easement together jointly in one deed of easement. And I'd be happy to answer any further questions that you might have.
Any questions? Thank you, Peter. If not, I will make a motion to approve item E2. Approving the first reading and schedule second reading and public hearing for July 27. I'll second.
Second.
Second, Mr. North. Madam Clerk, if you call the roll.
Mrs. Hooker? Yes. Mr. Norworth?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes. Item E3 is an ordinance amending Article 1, Article 2, Article 3, Article 4, and Article 5 of the Roanoke County zoning ordinance. Mr. Philip Thompson, Director of Planning.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. As you all are aware, planning staff continually works with our planning commission on reviewing and the county's development regulations and recommending amendments when it's appropriate. During the past six months, we've been working with the planning commission on the proposed set that's in front of you today. There are amendments proposed in all five articles of the zoning ordinance. The proposed amendments would correct inconsistencies, update information. They would add, revise, and delete definitions. And they would also add, revise, and delete regulations. I'll go through them fairly quickly. In Article 1, we are making amendments to Section 30-14, which deals with our reselling process. There was a slight tweak to this section from the work session to identify that it is the petitioning submitted by an applicant that the amendments would deal with, because there's timeframes that deals with these amendments. In Article 2, we are adding definitions for processing or manufacturing, as well as, we're amending the definition for industry type 1. We're also adding a definition for slaughterhouse, and we're deleting the definition for meatpacking and related industries. In Article 3, which are our developments, are our district standards, we are amending the maximum height limitation for principal structures in the R3 zoning district. We are adding agritourism as a permitted use in I1, which is our low-intensity industrial district. We are adding agritourism and slaughterhouses as a permitted use in I2, which is our high-intensity industrial district. And we are deleting meatpacking and related industries in the I2 zoning district. In Article 4, which deals with our use and design standards, we are amending several use and design standards that deal with agritourism, home occupations, and multifamily dwellings. In Article 5, which are development standards, there are several sections in the park, our parking regulations that we're making amendments to. Those deal with the location of parking, how do we compute required spaces, the minimum parking that's required, shared parking, and stacking spaces in drive-through facilities. We're also, there are several amendments dealing with signs. That deals with the capulation of allowable sign area on corner lots and special signs districts and regulations in top and centers. And then there's also an amendment to our landscaping and parking areas. The planning commission did hold a public hearing on this item a week ago, on July 6. There was one citizen who spoke during our ten-minute recess period. They called in, wanted to thank the planning commission staff for amendment to the home occupation standards that deal with home dog grooming. The planning commission does recommend approval of these amendments. During your work session, there was some discussion about, concerns about the number of amendments which granted discretion to the zoning administrator without including the parameters for the zoning administrator to consider in the exercise of such discretion. County Attorney's Office is working with us on trying to clean up that language. And we should have those for you at the second reading that are appropriate. So we deal with that issue that you all raised during the work session. The staff is recommending approval of the first reading and schedule the second reading for July 27. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Any comments or questions? I have a motion to approve first reading and schedule second reading for July 27.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second, Mr. Radford. Madam Clerk, if you call the roll.
Mrs. Hooker? Yes. Mr. Norworth?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes. Thank you. Item E4 is an ordinance, one, accepting and appropriating three-hundred-and-fifty-five-thousand and sixty-four cents in a grant, grant funding for the, from the Virginia Department of Emergency Management to the county's grant fund for technology upgrades to the county's NG 911 Public Safety Answering Points. And two, reallocating ninety-five thousand from the Communications IT Administrative Fund and sixty-five thousand nine hundred and fifty-nine dollars and thirty-two cents from the Communications Shop Fund to the grant fund to further finance such technology upgrades. Susan Slough, Assistant Director of Communications and Information Technology, welcome.
Good afternoon, members of the board. As you know, the phone system was installed in 2013 with an expected lifespan of seven years. And it was planned and adopted as part of the fiscal year budget 2022 through 2031. We applied for a grant to offset some of the cost, and it was approved much earlier than we thought. Hence, the reason we're asking for you to approve the first reading of the ordinance, accepting the grant funds, and reallocating the other monies to cover the costs.
Any questions? I have a motion to approve and set second reading for July 27.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve item E4.
All right.
Second.
All right. It's on our second. Madam Clerk, if you call the roll.
Mrs. Hooker? Yes. Mr. Norworth?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes. All right. Item F, are there any appointments that have not been given to the clerks? Item G is our consent agenda. All matters listed under the consent agenda are considered by the board to be routine and will be enacted by one resolution in the form or forms listed below. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. Is there any item you wish to have removed? Seeing none, I will make a motion to adopt our consent agenda. Do I have a second?
Second.
Madam Clerk, if you call the roll.
Mrs. Hooker? Yes. Mr. Norworth?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes. Under H, item H is citizens' comments and communications. I would like to welcome William Scaff to the voting.
William Scaff, 4815 Farmington Place Court, Roanoke, Virginia, 24018. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. My statement is entitled, "The Anti-American Origin of Town-Center Density Development", Part III, Universities, State, and Local Governments: Obama and Biden Adopt Density Development. Subsequent to the publication of the American Planning Association's Growing Smart Legislative Guidebook and the Environmental Planning Handbook, which underwent a second edition in 2014, university planning curricula and municipal planning departments all across the country adopted the town-center density development paradigm. They embraced smart growth as the model for achieving the government control necessary to overcome the prevailing American preference for a more suburban or rustic life with nature. The Obama administration's affirmatively furthering Fair Housing Rule of 2015 was a continuation of APA's Town-Center Density Development Initiative with a twist. According to AFFH, if the Department of Housing and Urban Development identified a racial imbalance in a particular suburban area by examining demographic statistics, it could proceed to claim that local zoning practices are responsible. HUD could then declare a violation of the Fair Housing Act of 1968, nullify local zoning ordinances, and require high-density zoning for low-income buyers to replace single-family zoning, thus limiting, if not eliminating, all future suburban development. President Trump repealed this rule in 2020, but Mr. Biden is reinstating it. The Joe Biden 2020 presidential campaign socialist platform continued this endeavor to force density development throughout the country. Quote, "Biden will tie new federal investments in housing to a requirement that states and localities eliminate regulations that reduce the availability of affordable housing and contribute to sprawl." He will direct his Secretaries of Housing and Urban Development and Transportation to identify existing federal grant programs that can be amended by adding zoning reform as a requirement. Today, in Roanoke County, we have planning and economic development departments who are following the precepts of Agenda 21 through the concept of smart growth, however unwittingly. Their success in attracting new business and industry has nothing to do with density development. The Reimagine, the Reimagine Town Center Program creates density development plans for private property that then compels or entices owners into adopting them, including detrimental zoning changes. Positive aspects of these plans, pedestrian and streetscape enhancements, road and traffic improvements, community centers and spaces can be accomplished without density development. Government will certainly expand these urban corridors over time. Most of the rest of the world lags behind the United States due to the command and control economies of socialist or totalitarian regimes. These suppress economic activity through inadequate and misguided central planning or government collusion, all the while diminishing the human spirit. Americans achieved our standard of living through sheer hard work, inspired by the free enterprise system that encourages ingenuity and diligence. We know best what kind of life we want for ourselves and our children, not a foreign ideology intended to diminish our quality of life. We have earned the right to demand that native vegetation balance the built environment locally as well as regionally, and that massive buildings not dominate our landscape. We have the inalienable right to live in single-family houses and small multi-unit residential dwellings surrounded by trees. The suburban and rustic are what make Roanoke County special. That is our identity, not urban development or manufactured cities. Density development should neither be encouraged nor facilitated, and should be strictly limited. Thank you for this opportunity to speak.
Item I is reports. Is there a motion to receive the following reports?
Make a motion.
All right. I'll second. Madam Clerk, if you call the roll.
Mrs. Hooker? Yes. Mr. Norworth?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes. Item J is reports and inquiries of board members. Today, I'll begin with Mr. North.
Thank you, Chair. Two or three comments. On June 28, Supervisor Hooker and I attended a Roanoke County hosted regional broadband discussion with local and state government officials and staff. The goal was to enhance our strategy to increase broadband coverage with state funding. And I want to thank Roanoke County staff for pulling that meeting together. Yesterday, I attended a Roanoke County comprehensive planning session relating to local transportation needs for the future. And between now and 2038, I'm not probably going to be around in 2038, but if I am, I'll look forward to seeing what those trends are that come to be in Roanoke County. Certainly a forward-looking discussion in line with our comprehensive plan. Later today, Vistar will hold a groundbreaking for their new twenty-six-thousand-plus-square-foot state-of-the-art facility that will offer the most up-to-date medical technology available, allowing Vistar's highly-trained team of ophthalmologists and optometrists to provide patients retinal eye care, anterior surgical eye care, as well as routine and primary care. And I'm proud to say the new facility, once completed, will be located at 6125 Airport Road in the Hollins District. That's all, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Radford?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. I would like to make a request. I was recently out at Explorer Center for a family reunion on Sunday. And while we were there, I'm taking several family members through. were there, I'm taking several family members through the, the center that we have there. It's also serves as the welcome center for the Parkway. And I noticed we have a big plaque of, or a big drawing of the future of what Explorer Park will look like, and I don't remember us receiving a presentation on that. I would like for us to have a presentation to know a little bit more about that, the timelines, you know, there's a big zip line that's going across it, there's a footbridge, there's another.
Are you referring to the Adventure Plan?
No. Right.
Yes.
Yes, what?
We adopted, we adopted that in 2015.
Okay. I wasn't here.
Yeah.
I wasn't here, so you were here, you weren't here in 2015.
I was on the President's Commission then, so I knew about it, but that's okay.
Okay. So, we need to catch Supervisor Radford up on that. I don't, I saw that.
Doug has knocked out, but we'll get you.
I've never seen that before.
It's a great book that you really like, that outlines everything.
Yeah, formal development plan for Explorer Park, the Adventure Plan.
Okay. All right. I'd love to see that. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Mrs. Hooker?
I just have really one thing, and it's regarding the Catawba hospitals. I'm sure most have heard by now that they are no longer admitting new patients for an undetermined amount of time, and I have personally contacted our state representatives, and I'll continue to speak on behalf of our citizens who need these services. We've got to be compassionate to this very vulnerable population, and, and the staff serving for the care of these patients, they deserve pay, adequate pay, on par with the type of services that they're delivering, and I just wanted to share that I'm going to continue to advocate for this, for this cause, and I appreciate my board support. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Well, in that same vein, I guess I'm going to speak to all of the legislative priorities. I'm, I'm very pleased with Mr. Luback and everybody who's worked behind the scenes on this to lay out these four. You know, Catawba Hospital is, is something that we do need in our area, but, you know, the capital needs and schools, I know we've had a lot of discussions about that, where the Citizens Committee is now, everybody's been appointed, so hopefully it'll be meeting here shortly on what the Burton Center will look like, and that's probably the greatest challenge facing the county at this point. We've done very well with our funding stream for our other schools, but, you know, when it gets to our skilled labor in the valley, we're, I think we're lagging behind, and, you know, Burton Center needs to be a priority. So, I'm very pleased with everything that's laid out in our legislative priorities. I look forward to seeing how, how that'll work out as they go into the special session in August. We will now move into, oh, excuse me, no, we won't. We're going to go to work session first. Item K is a work session to review proposed changes to Chapter 15, Parks Recreation of Roanoke County Code, of the Roanoke County Code, and then we will move into Item L, which is our closed session. I will move that we go into closed session pursuant to the Code of Virginia, Section 2 dot 2 dash 3711 dot A dot 3, for discussion or consideration of the disposition of publicly held real, real property where the discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiation strategy of the public body, namely in the Town of Vinton, and pursuant to the Code of Virginia, Section 2 dot 2 dash 31, excuse me, 3711 A 3, to discuss or consider the disposition of publicly held real estate that is presently owned, or excuse me, presently used for park purposes where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body. Is a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Madam Clerk, if you call the roll.
Mrs. Hooker? Yes. Mr. Norworth?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes.